I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, boot camps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Good evening, everyone. I recall this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. Just a reminder that the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, count a motion approved, the agenda is circulated. Deputy Mayor Fager, seconded by Councillor Caldwell, all those in favor. Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Down to announcements. I have a few. The last few weeks have been quite exciting for the town of Bridgewater. Obviously, a couple of weeks ago, we had the announcement from Michelin, the expansion of that plant, which is significant in securing the future of the over 1,200 direct jobs and thousands and thousands of indirect jobs. So I can't really, there's no way to overstate just how important that announcement was for not just the town of Bridgewater, but, you know, Lunenburg, Queens in its entirety from end to end. So that was, that was quite something. Adding on to that, on Friday, President Joe Biden was in Ottawa for his first visit to the country since becoming President of the United States. And in the House of Commons, the Prime Minister acknowledged there were three Michelin employees in attendance, and acknowledged Natalia, who is from the Ukraine, and acknowledged not just the Bridgewater itself, but the quality of the product that comes out of our Michelin factory, which we should all be so proud of. And it goes hand in hand with why there was an announcement to expand the plant, just because they produce a, they produce a product that they can't replicate that quality anywhere else. So, congratulations to the Michelin staff, the workers, who put in the effort every day that the expansion could be possible. And also, I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate our staff here at the town of Bridgewater, our planning team, the CIO, many of our other, like, engineering, public works staff, and council, last council and this council, for making some important decisions to get us to the place where this expansion could take place. So, a lot of things over the last five years had to happen, and because things did the way they did, and staff did what they needed to do to get it done, we had that very important announcement. I also was, immediately after that announcement, went to Clermont-Vernet to meet with Michelin at their head office, ironically completely unrelated to the Michelin announcement, toured their facility, had some great discussions about some other things that Michelin is working on, completely unrelated to transportation, which are exciting. And as these conversations continue, more details will follow. And then, I spent a couple of days in meetings at the Canadian Embassy in France, talking about other opportunities for our community. And all of these things go back to two things. They are directly related to, again, the quality of the product that comes out of our Michelin plant. So, in the eyes of Michelin Corporate, which is also aligned with the eyes of the French government, our Michelin plant is very important in their whole grand plans, which is amazing. And the other is, Energized Bridgewater keeps coming up. So, in another country halfway across the world, the Energized Bridgewater plan keeps coming back, and it is, especially in Europe, where climate change is very much baked into their legislation, baked into their future plans for all their corporations, they need to be in communities that are green and sustainable, and working towards that net zero target that we're aiming for. And so, when they look for a North American footprint, they are looking at those communities that align with their goals as well, and Bridgewater just keeps coming up over and over and over again. And that's a, that's a long on-ramp for us, right? Energized Bridgewater goes back a long time, and if you go back all the way to the ICSP, which is 2009, 2010, it's a long time, but so worth it, when I have the privilege of sitting in these meetings, and I think our town is just under 9,000 people, and they're talking about it as if we are like this huge metropolis because of the importance, which is just, everyone should be proud, and I don't mean just around this table, but everyone in the community should be proud of where the town is and where it's going, because it's a very, very bright and sustainable future. So that, and again, more details on some of these things are gonna happen. And in there, I had meetings with the city of Clermont-Vernet, who we are a member of, the International Network of Michelin Cities with, and had some exciting discussions on some partnership and exchange possibilities. So, some conversations with Nova Scotia Community College coming up regarding that, and some other, some other entities about some possibilities of internships and exchanges, which apparently is very popular. Our Director of Community Development would know, but it's very popular for European countries to do exchanges. I'll give you an engineer for a month, you give me your engineer for a month, and things like that, so we'll see where we can go with that. Anyway, it's just, it was a lot, and capped off by, of course, like I said, the President of the United States now knowing exactly where Bridgewater is and why it's on the map, so it's awesome. Are there any other announcements from members of council?
Yes, Your Worship. I'll just be a reminder that council will be doing Talk Bridgewater tomorrow evening, as well as during the day, sorry, two locations. So Shore Centre, the mall, will be from 2:00 to 4:00, and in the evening tomorrow, it's from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Elsie Elsie Galleria, so it's open to anybody to come out and have a chat with councillor, mayor, and just ask your questions, or your feedback is welcome.
I almost forgot, just a reminder for the public that there's a public participation meeting at 6 o'clock on Wednesday at Nova Scotia Community College regarding 421 Le Havre Street, so that's the mall, but also related to the maximum height of corner lots in the C2 zone. You do need to register ahead of time, so please, you can go on the town's website, there's information there, or there's a couple of social media posts that talk about how to register for that, but we do require people to register just because there are capacity, room capacity limits. So, yeah, and again, that is to deal with 421 Le Havre Street, and then that maximum height on the corner lots in the C2 zone. If there are other topics that people wish to discuss, then the venue for that is to come before council. We have, before every meeting gets underway, there's a section for delegations, and the public is more than welcome to address any comments or concerns that they have with council when we have our meetings. Any other items? All right, we have the minutes from March 13th, regular council meeting, and the March 20th, special council meeting. Any issues, aereum emissions with those? Hearing none, a motion to approve the minutes is circulated. Councillor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Down to correspondence for information. April is Autism Nova Scotia, it's Autism Acceptance Month, and Autism Nova Scotia, especially the So Shore chapter, wants us to be aware of that. And worth noting that there are approximately 30,000 individuals in Nova Scotia that are on the autism spectrum, and it's 1 in 34 people, and 1 in 66 across the country. So that is April, April is Autism Acceptance Month. Perfect. Flag will be displayed. We are down to correspondence for action. Down the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 24, use of reserve funds for park camera system upgrade.
Conflict of interest. I am a member of the Legion, so I'll just excuse myself.
Thank you, Councillor Thorburn.
So this is a request from the Legion to take from the reserve that the town of Bridgewater presently holds, for the purposes of the Legion, and they're requesting $9,500 to be released from that reserve fund to assist in the upgrade of the camera system at the Veterans Memorial Park. So the reserve is larger than that, so we would be able to accommodate that request of council. So desired, is being suggested that if council wishes to do that, they would just give direction that we would include that within the 23-24 budget, so show the money coming out, and show the expenditure in the form of funds going to the Legion to do that.
Any questions, comments? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the use of $9,500 to upgrade the camera system at Veterans Memorial Park, and would first staff to include in the 2023-2024 budget.
Thank you, I have a second, Deputy Mayor Fager, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Councillor Thorburn, come on down. I have 9.1, Grants to Organizations, so we've had another intake period, we have a number of grants listed there, I don't know, oh, yep, sure. Never know who's gonna come to speak to this. Perfect.
Okay, so Policy 77 of council, the Grants to Organizations policy, provides for two intake periods for grants to nonprofit organizations and other community organizations. And the March 1st intake had a total of $39,500 of request value, with only $18,860 remaining in the budget after the September allocation. So with the report that you have in front of you, the committee had, as you can see, another large amount of discussion and challenging conversation as the value outstripped the budget that they had, but they've made a series of recommendations to award grants to the DMC Boxing Club, Bridgewater Curling Club, Blue Nose Coastal Action Foundation, Kinship Performing Arts, Michelin Social Club, Society of St. Vincent de Paul, So Shore Multicultural Association, St. Joseph Church, the Archdiocese of Health Experiments, and the YMCA. You'll also note that the committee is recommending to go over budget by $7,640 to support the full ask of the Michelin Social Club for the purchase and installation of a generator, so they can become a comfort center. That's the right term, sorry, yes. So if there are any questions, I will do my best, or the committee members can also chime in around their, their decisions and recommendations.
So I don't have any specific questions, maybe just a comment. I know one of the grants in particular is to offset the costs of staffing, training, conducting workshops, and help with the rental space costs, which is, which is fine, but do we have any, none of these grants are going towards remodeling or renovating rental space, right?
That's not my understanding, no.
Okay, no, I just, to me, there's a difference when they own the facility versus when you're renting it, because then there's no assurance that you're going to actually benefit if your landlord kicks it, but I just, I just wanted to confirm that. Any other questions or comments on that? Councillor Thorburn?
My only comment would be, I would hope that every request was followed by the financial statements to make sure of the policy.
Yep, seeing heads nod.
That is part of the policy and the process, yep.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to confirm, thank you.
That's, I can confirm.
Perfect, thank you.
And they can't apply for another grant unless they've completed, if they've received one in the past. They have to have their paperwork complete in order to be considered again.
Yeah, so I did note that, that one of the grants was not issued because they didn't apply before, so that's, and received it before.
They applied in the same fiscal year.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there are some elements in the policy, so we don't award twice in one year.
Any other comments or questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Caldwell? Just have to find it here, Your Worship. Thank you.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants to Organizations Committee and award grants for the March 1st, 2023 intake period as follows. $2,000, DMC Boxing Club, $1,500, Bridgewater Curling Club, $2,500, Blue Nose Coastal Action Foundation, $2,000, Kinship Performing Arts Center Association, $8,000, Michelin Social Club, $2,000, $2,500, Society of St. Vincent de Paul, St. Joseph Conference, $1,000, So Shore Multicultural Association, $2,000, St. Joseph's Church, St. John the Apostle Parish, Archdiocese of Halifax Yarmouth, and finally, $5,000, YMCA of Southwest Nova Scotia.
Thank you. I have a second, dear please. Councillor Caldwell, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. 9.2 is RFP 2022-13 Solar Photovoltaic Feasibility Assessment of Multiple Town Facilities.
Good evening. So the proposed 2023-24 budget includes a carry forward project for the solar PV assessments of various town facilities, with the funding, this project being completed through funding through low-carbon communities. This project is associated with the Energy Management Action Plan of 21 to 2025. We issued the RFP in late February. It closed on March 8th, receiving four requests. Those, sorry, four proposals, sorry. Those proposals were evaluated with their standard criteria, meaning the review of executive summary, the qualifications and references, their scope, approach, methodology, and added value. The average scores for the four reviewers of the project are listed as attached. Two of the four proposals met the minimum technical score, which we expect them to get 56 points out of 70 or 80 percent, is what we have the lowest technical score to be. Of the two compliance proposals, J.L. Richards and Associates were offered the lowest price. The, should be noted that the budget for this project is $100,000, 90 percent of that is funded through Low Carbon Communities Fund. If awarded to J.L. Richards as recommended, it would leave approximately $75,000 for the design and install of the highest priority locations for the solar PV. Staff are recommending the award to J.L. Richards and Associates for an estimated cost of $28,275.62, HST included, or in other words, $25,641.32 in net HST.
Thank you. Questions? About the town engineer? No? Ready to make a motion?
I move that RFP 2022-13 Solar Photovoltaic PV feasibility assessment of multiple town facilities be awarded to J.L. Richards and Associates Limited for the proposed price of $28,275.62, HST included, $25,641.32 in net HST.
Thank you, I have a second, Councillor Thorburn. Further discussion? Question, may call, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Down to business arising, unfinished business. We have the Bridgewater Heritage Property Incentive Policy. Notice was given for this on the 27th of February.
Good evening, council. So the proposed Bridgewater Heritage Incentive Policy would provide registered heritage properties, property owners with financial assistance for exterior facade improvements or structural improvements integral to the maintenance and preservation of the historical integrity of the property. It would allow the town to incentivize the registration of heritage properties to augment the investment in Bridgewater's built heritage. The enabling legislative framework is the Heritage Property Act. Section 22.1 of the Act states the council may provide financial assistance in respect to municipal heritage property to any person to assist in the restoration or renovation of such property upon such terms and conditions as council deems fit. This gives, this gives council the authority to provide grant funding for municipal heritage properties in the town, and Heritage Advisor Committee has determined that a grant program is the best course of action for an incentive program. Grant programs are the most common form of incentive used for built heritage by other towns and municipalities across Nova Scotia. It allows local governments to provide financial assistance through cost sharing and demonstrates the commitment to build heritage and the role that it plays in the community. Staff believe that a budget of $2,500 for the 23-24 fiscal year would be sufficient, given that there are currently six municipally registered heritage properties in Bridgewater. If approved this evening by council and subject to budget approval, all registered heritage property owners within the town would be eligible for 50 percent cost shared assistance for external facade improvements aligned with the architectural style, including any character-defining elements that have been identified in the process of designation. And that would be up to a maximum of $2,500 per property per year, as outlined in the, in the policy. So as such, as proposed by the Heritage Advisory Committee, staff recommend the council approve the Bridgewater Heritage Property- the Bridgewater Heritage Property Incentive Policy.
Any comments or questions on that one? Mr. Brown? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I move that Town Council, the Town of Bridgewater, approve the Heritage Property Incentive Policy as presented in Document 21-177C as Policy 111 for the Town of Bridgewater, effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Most opposed, motion is carried, thank you. I will now pause our council meeting, and we will move into a public hearing. So I'll call a public hearing to order. I will just outline that all the statutory requirements have been met. And so I don't think there's any members of the public here, so I kind of will not go through all the individual rules of order, and I'll turn it over to our staff to walk through this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, Logan Road, so this is the public hearing with respect to the partial closure request, and then the closure of certain public streets, in this case Logan Road, or portions thereof, policy. So at the January 30th regular council meeting, a resolution was passed to refer a request to purchase a section of Logan Road and, and a very small accompanying or a nearby parcel to staff to review and determine any outstanding issues prior to council considering any offer to purchase or carrying out the public process for such a land sale. And that request was made on behalf of Michelin. As far as process, in accordance with Section 315 of the Municipal Government Act, Town Council may, by policy, permanently close any street or part of a street and shall hold a public hearing before passing the policy. So upon closure of the street, should council approve that this evening, council may enter into an agreement of purchase and sale where the section of street may be sold and consolidated with the adjacent 233 Logan Road to facilitate Michelin's land assembly. So in order to facilitate the requested closure of Logan Road and subsequent conveyance of, of those parcels, staff are recommending a two-phase closure. Primary reason for the recommended approach is the lot frontage requirement of the subdivision bylaw. Basically put, all lots within the town must abut a public street. If the full Logan Road closure were to occur, there would be lots without the applicable 20 feet or six meters of public street frontage. As such, the recommended Phase 1 closure would result in a section of Logan Road from the southwestern corner of the existing Michelin plant to St. Philip Street, and that would remain open as a public street. This arrangement would be an interim measure until such time as those lots can achieve frontage on St. Philip Street via another arrangement involving traditionally-owned lands. When that alternative frontage is achievable, Phase 2 closure would occur. So I have, this is, shows the two sections in, in question of Logan Road. Michelin's there, just on, on the right. There's a faint building footprint outline. So the Phase 1 closure shown in blue, and the Phase 2 in red. And there's that, the point at the southwestern corner that I spoke about. So on the next slide, shows the, what we're calling Preliminary Lot Consolidation Plan. So these two lots back here required frontage, frontage on a public street. So if Logan Road was closed completely, then it wouldn't have that. So that Phase 1 closure would end up there. This would remain a public street until such time as these lots achieve frontage elsewhere. As it currently stands, to accommodate the closure of either section of Logan Road, staff need the following items submitted for approval. Since these matters are a work in progress, staff are recommending a conditioned closure applicable to each section where the actual closure, by policy, wouldn't occur until the section of Logan Road in question is conveyed to Michelin by agreement of purchase and sale. So council can approve the policy with respect to the closure of certain public street this evening. But the closure wouldn't actually take effect until the town is ready to deed the parcels to Michelin. That will give staff the time needed to receive and approve the plans and reports listed here. So I'll, and I'll run through them quickly. So we need a plan for traffic management. So where there are dead ends, we need turnaround areas. Plan for servicing reconfiguration related to the decommissioning of the Logan Road service infrastructure. So for closing Logan Road, that service infrastructure needs to be decommissioned. An access plan in relation to the existing buildings upon the subject section of Logan Road needing access to adjacent public streets. Servicing plan in relation to those same existing buildings. And because we're looking for the plans and we want to approve the plans in order to close the street, the work will have to come later. And so to set that up, we would want an estimate of cost to complete the work, including the reconfiguration of services. We would also want a performance surety in the amount of 125% of those estimated costs to complete the work, or another form of security acceptable to council. And, and a construction agreement specifying the time within any construction, within that, any construction shall be commenced and completed. Also, an easement agreement in favor of the Town Public Service Commission for access to the water booster station at 336 St. Philip Street, and that would be on the Phase 2 closure section. So for the recommendation, staff recommend that council approve the request of partial closures identified as Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Logan Road and subsequent policy with respect to the closure of the certain public street, as presented in Schedule A of the, of the report in front of council. Including clarity that the actual street closures pursuant to the policy identified as Phase 1 and Phase 2 be effective upon completion, completion of the respective agreements of purchase and sale between the Town and Michelin North America, Canada Incorporated, and thus the land conveyance. I'll take any questions.
Any questions from council? Maybe this was coming, and partial makes sense, Phase 1, Phase 2? Any more questions? All right, then I will adjourn our, oh, sorry.
It's just going to be, is that dealing with the asphalt pavement plant in behind the very mix?
That would be one of the lots that requires the public street frontage.
Yes, okay, no, that's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm. Great, thanks.
Perfect, all right. I will now close our public hearing. We'll return to our council session. And I'll be looking for a motion for this, please. Councilor Conklin?
I move that council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the requested two-phase partial closure of Logan Road in Policy 112 with respect to the closure of certain public streets, Logan Road portion, as presented in Appendix A of Document 23-017B, including clarity that the actual street closure pursuant to Policy 112 be effective upon completion of the agreement of purchase and sale between the Town of Bridgewater and Michelin North America, Canada, Inc., one for each phase, with all the conditions, including the engineering and subdivision bylaw conditions of the agreement of purchase and sale having, having been met, and the lands conveyed to Michelin North America.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Tanner. Further discussion? Question, question being called, all is in favor? Most opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to 10.3 Procurement Policy Amendments. So gave notice last month, we deferred it to this month. Welcome our Director of Finance, Stan.
Good evening. The, the changes that we're recommending to the procurement policy relate primarily to dollar values. So the first recommendation is to actually increase the threshold. So right now, staff can procure things up to $2,000 without actually obtaining three quotes or doing a request for quotes, that type of invitational competition, if we want to use the wording in the document. And we're proposing to increase that to $5,000. And then in addition to that, we would like to increase the threshold for public procurement from 20, right now, for any goods and services, anything over $25,000, we have to do a tender or request for proposal. So we're suggesting for goods and services that be increased to $50,000 and adding a category for construction with a limit of $100,000. So we would only do RFPs and tender documents for goods and services and over $50,000 and construction over $100,000. Under that limit, staff will be required to obtain three written quotes and, and follow the rest of the procedures in the policy. And so that's a significant change. However, those values have been in place for over 10 years and haven't increased at all. And so we think about our purchasing power from 10 years ago to now, that in itself partially justifies that. But in addition to that, there's been changes in Atlantic trade agreements and other agreements that permit us to have a much higher threshold. So we felt that at least moving to these values made sense at this time. It also enables staff to get those smaller projects done on a little more timely basis. In addition to those changes, we're requesting that we add the authority to award, for the CAO to award projects that are within budget and are included in the budget, up to $250,000. So even if it were an RFP or a tender, the amount up to $250,000 could be awarded by the CAO without coming to council. And the majority of the reason for that is just sometimes we have timelines for suppliers that they'll only hold their price for a certain amount of time, and then we have to get reports to council and so on and on the agenda. So this enables those agreements to be approved quicker with them going through the CAO's office. So those are, are the primary changes. I'm not, if there's some other, you know, some wording changes and some definitions added, but those are the primary changes to the document.
Questions from council or Councilor Caldwell?
How do these threshold changes compare to other towns?
We actually, as part of the document that we provided that you should be able to see in, in your package, the very last page of that document, there is a comparison to other municipal units. Most are either where we were or they've already updated to kind of include a construction threshold. But it's safe to say they're somewhat all over the board for each specific municipal unit on that chart. East Hans is exactly where we're recommending to go with respect to some of the values, but they don't have a, as high a threshold in construction. And to be honest, we don't think we'll capture a lot within that $100,000, because most of our construction, you know, is in the million-dollar range, not in the $100,000 range. These would be more small construction. It's likely only going to capture a small portion of our budget items. And, you know, so I'm looking at it sideways, sorry. But the province of Nova Scotia is increasing their thresholds to align with the ones we're recommending as well.
Other questions? None, someone prepared to make a motion, Councilor Caldwell?
Move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the amendments to the procurement policy as presented in Document 23-012A, and the consolidated policy as Policy 79 for the town, effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McDonald. All is in favor? Most opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to 10.4 Carry Forward of 2022-23 Capital Budgets.
All right, so the next item on the list. Back in January, we brought to council a list of carry-forward projects that we felt were included in the 23-20, or sorry, 22-23 capital budget that wouldn't be complete by year-end. Subsequent to that list being approved by council, we've actually removed a number of projects. And you'll see those listed as removals in the report. And that would include some camera upgrade, a ride-on roller, two vehicles that arrived recently, some wastewater treatment plant work, and, and so on. So that gives us a revised list. And I've highlighted three items on that revised list that were actually not previously on the list and were added. They were in the 22-23 capital budget, but they weren't on the original carry-forward list. We felt we were going to get them finished, but as we still encounter delays in getting things completed and deliveries, we've added those. So we have a revised total for carry-forward of $18,703,627.
Questions on those? What clarification? I guess we're good. And now down to, down to the fun stuff, so the 2023-24 budget. And thank you to Deputy Mayor Fugier for chairing the meeting last week, the special council meeting to do with budget. So we're just getting it set up. Perfect, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
At our last meeting, we presented to council the operating budget. And previously, we had presented to council the capital budget for 2023-24 fiscal year. So tonight, we were just proposing to kind of highlight just a high-level summary of where we left it off at and kind of what the next steps are for council in terms of their budget deliberations. So as council recalls, we had shown the budget that showed that with the tax rate remaining the same and achieving all the things that council had identified within their strategic priorities and, and accommodating the capital plan, what we, what we're funding from operating and some of the, the, the increases in just cost of operating, such as fuel and wages and, and power, that we were looking at a operating deficit of $589,000. And the operating budget was $28,466,157. And that, again, is keeping the tax rates the same as last year with no increases. We then showed you that of, of your operating budget, and in terms of that $28 million, there is a, a large amount of mandatory contributions. You can see that mandatory contributions were correctional services, regional housing, education, library, board and assessment services. And we've seen an increase of, rounded up $190,000 in, in that category in terms of mandatory contributions. So that's a pressure added to, to your budget this year. Education has gone up the largest at $173,394 as the increase. So education is $2.35 million. We then summarized for you what some of the significant changes were within the baseline. So if council recalls, when we have our, our budget document, you'll see that we have last year's budget, then we have the adjusted baseline, which is, if we did nothing new, we backed out all those one-time things and just went down to the core, that's your baseline. So that's no new services, no new projects, just keep in, keep in status quo. And then we have additions. We have deletions, which are service-level changes or things no longer required that we pulled out of the baseline. And then we have your budget. So in the baseline, these highlighted some of the, some of the added cost and some of the things that may have been reduced in the baseline. You can see most of them were added, added cost. And we, we did review those with council at the last meeting. But just to give you an idea of where some of the pressures have been, there's a significant amount in salaries at $868,000. So that's for a non-union and union. And so, and police services, $132,000. Transfer to wastewater reserve is $290,000. So there would be revenue to offset, offset that. Fire protection rates, so the cost of our hydrants has gone up, $190,000. Energy, fuel and insurance, all kind of lumped together is $236,000. Energized Bridgewater is shown at $181,000, but again, that's grant-funded, but it is on the expenditure side, an increase. Then we showed you the, just the high level that if we, if we look at our, at our budget, you can see that for additions, we have $1.37 million in new things added to the budget this year. So, so last year, we had, our budget was $25.9 million. This year, the adjusted baseline, if we did nothing new, is $27.38 million. And that, so there's a slight increase there. And some of those we went over in the baseline, the things that we had to add, the wages, the fuel, the insurance, the mandatory contributions to make up that about $1.5 million in difference. And then we have additions. And the additions are new things. They're new, we highlighted them for, for you at the last meeting to, to kind of go over what those were. And then we have deletions. And then we have deletions, which are things that we may have been removing from the baseline, no longer required. And that then brought us to our proposed budget of 28.36, oh, sorry, 28.46 million. And the deficit there as well, $589,000. I'm just going to, these slides we went through at our last meeting, which summarized all the additions, and we're certainly prepared to talk to council about that as well. We then reviewed the reserves to show you that we have an estimated balance of 11.98 million as of March 31, 2023. And with all the ins and outs that are going to happen to fund things and for money going into reserve, that will be at nine, we're estimating to be at 9.2 million on March 31, 2024. And then capital reserves, again, show the balance at the end of this present fiscal year being 3.64 million, the money coming in for gas tax funding, and then money going out to fund capital projects, as well as the interest that we earn on that reserve. And then that, so it shows you that when we, it's 2.5 and our capital reserve loan balance of 166 comes out, which leaves us with 2.4 million in capital reserve. We then reviewed the sewer rate proposal, which was just proposing overall that the revenue from the sewer rate would increase by 20%. And the distribution of that in terms of rates is not 20% across every category. And we detailed that for council as well. So there would be an increase in the residential rate and the additional unit rates, as well as the commercial rates and hospital. And the hotels are also included in that as well, of having an increase in the rate. Capital budget, we did review that with council. So and we indicated that there's a significant amount of capital investments that we're making over the next 10 years. Some big numbers in the next few years in particular, as we work on our wastewater treatment and collection system. We then translated that into what that means in terms of debt service ratios. And you can see that we have some relatively high years in terms of our debt service ratios. And really what that means is that our debt servicing costs, what we have to fund through the operating budget in terms of the payback on that debt. And where that, where that starts off now at 1.5 million and how that goes up over 5 million by, I think it's 2031, 32. So that's a pressure on your operating budget that's going to be building every year as we borrow to do these capital projects. Your capital budget is 15.1 million. And then again, that showed you the various sources of funding, how we're going to be funding the capital budget. We will be borrowing 8.2 million to fund the capital budget this year. And we'll be using 1.12 million from operating, some reserve money from gas tax. There's grants of 3.4 million and operating reserve of 1.57 million to help fund that. Kim also provided you with a little bit of an insight into what are some of the best practices or guidelines with respects to what should your reserve funds be at? So this indicates that like from an operating perspective, we're well, we exceed the recommended guidelines. We have 37.9%, I believe it is, of our general operating expenses at that amount in reserve. And the GFOA, which is the, stands for something Finance Officers Association, recommends that we have not less than two months of operating funds. And so that would be 16.7%. So we well exceed in operating. Capital, which is, as Kim indicated, a more restrictive reserve, we tend to put less in capital because it's, you have to use it for capital when you put it in there. Operating has a little bit more flexibility. And we are at 0.6 where the recommended guideline is 10%. So then we kind of left it at this spot, which is the options to address the deficit. So as we indicated, with keeping the tax rate the same and doing all of the things that council has identified that they wish to achieve, we have an operating deficit of 599,000. And your options to address that are to look at revenue and expenses. Pretty much it. So you can, revenue primarily, as we've shown in the budget presentation, is derived from our tax rates. We can look at user fees, and we do with the sewer rate and looking at the 20% increase there. But application fees, those types of things are going to get you like small gains in terms of revenue, so won't have the impact that you're looking for, but certainly can be looked at. So the tax rate is really where the revenue source would come from. One cent on the tax rate equals $83,364. So that's residential and commercial. So you have to have both of them. If you increase each one by one cent, that will give you $83,000. So when you think of the amount that you need to balance the budget, because we can't have a budget that's in a deficit position, it has to be balanced. Just keep that figure in mind. One of the things that we did show council at the last meeting is kind of the concept of a tax rate stabilization. So when you do your budget every year, you have the option of kind of just looking at that year isolation of all the other years that are projected into the future. We like to give council kind of a bigger picture. So we look at our capital, we understand what debt, like what our debt borrowing or borrow requirements are going to be, and what our debt costs are going to be. We make some assumptions with respects to the cost of living increases, wages, assessment growth, and we build that into a projection. So there's a lot of variables in there. So it's really a snapshot. Certainly the last year, for example, with CPI increases like they were, weren't in our future models that we had from previous years. So it's, variables can be introduced at any point in time that can set that off. But based on some conservative assumptions, this kind of shows you what the next three years look like based on tax rate scenario, tax rate increase scenarios. So you can, you see in the first column, status quo, that there is no increase. So we have to find cuts of 599,000, so essentially $600,000. If you increase, and that includes increasing the sewer rate for 20%. If you add five cents on, we're still looking at reductions, but less, that's 181,000. Eight cents will put you in a positive position of 70,000. And 10 cents, you can see that for the next two years keeps you in a surplus position, pretty close to zero in the third year. We then kind of gave you that projection with a 10-year window. Again, understanding that, if you remember the debt servicing cost graph, you see that the cost starts to really climb up in about four or five years. So that does kind of get reflected in here, that as we start to borrow more, we have to pay that back. And you can see that an eight cent, well, we saw the five cent, every year it gets greater in terms of the number of reductions that you'll have to make in your services in order to balance it at zero with a five cent rate. And an eight cent rate, it shows you what that looks like, and then the 10 cent rate as well. So that's just looking at your tax rate. And as I said, we gave you the options of five cents, eight cents and 10 cents to give you an idea about what reductions you'd have to make based on those numbers. It doesn't do a lot to your debt service ratio. It takes big, big numbers to have an impact on your debt service ratio, so, but we thought we'd show that anyway. With your rate increases, how does that improve your debt service ratio? Because that ratio is a factor of tax revenue. It's not significant enough to impact that too much. So what does that mean when you're looking at the impact to the taxpayer? So we did show you this at our last meeting as well. So we have to remember that if we don't, if council just looks at reductions, total reductions and no tax rate increase, there's going to be an increase on tax bill if you keep the tax rate the same because cap assessment. And so that cap assessment's at 7.7%. So we, Kim provided you with the 22, 23 scenario of what they would have paid this year. And this is a property that has a capped value of 158,134 with their assessed value at 165. So their cap's a little bit below their taxable assessment. You can see that the property tax bill, it would be 3,350. If we just this year look at the sewer rate increase with the capped assessment, no increases in tax rates, they will pay $250 more this year. If we look at a 10 cent rate, you can see that it's the difference between 250 and 420 that they would pay in addition to that. So that would be 170, that they would pay extra for that 10 cents on that value of home. So that's on 10, with a 10 cent rate. So you can kind of, it's five cents, half that type of thing. And we did also run this scenario based on a taxable assessment that is a little higher than that of 300,000 to kind of give you what does that look like with status quo versus the 10 cent tax rate increase. So you can see status quo with the sewer rate, it would be 448. And with the 10 cent tax rate, it'd be the difference between 771 and 448, so slightly over 300 that that would be. So that's if you looked at tax rate only. And again, if it's five cents, you would just divide that in half, that increase. So then we talked a bit about options to address the budget deficit, which would include expenditures. So not just the tax rate, but what could we look at as options within our, within what we're trying to achieve this year and what could possibly be pulled out. So we provided you with a list of those. And again, these were just suggestions that staff, as a management team, had kind of went through and said, these are things that might have the least amount of impact in terms of what you're trying to achieve this year. But they're there, and we did go over them at our last meeting. I don't know if you want me to run through the list again, but they're pretty self-evident on the screen, and they're a combination of both operating and capital in terms of where you could go to to find some savings within your operating budget. It would mean that there's things you won't be doing, because every one of these things kind of has something attached to it in terms of an action for the most part, but they are options. So that was the capital slide there, that kind of provides that to you. And it is in the PowerPoint presentation as well. So that's where we left it at our last meeting. And I think after we had the presentation, it was fairly long and council needed some time to kind of digest. So we didn't receive any direction at the last meeting with respects to what options you may wish to pursue. We have had a few questions come in from council over the last few days about, as they were encouraged to do, with some questions with, first one we had was with respects to sewer rates. So we did provide that to councils, which was kind of an analysis of what other areas charge with respects to sewer rates and how much they would subsidize. And we did kind of express that we figured it would be all over the board, and it pretty much is. And it's difficult to tell how much is subsidy and how much isn't. But there were some fairly high numbers in terms of what hospitals would pay, for example, like 40, 50,000. So how much of that would be subsidized? Residential as well was higher. Some of them do water meters, so they do it on a consumption basis, which we do a flat rate and trying to move more towards that consumption piece, but not quite there yet. So we did provide that. There was a question with respects to the fire department firefighter volunteers and the remuneration there and how do we address the cost of living there. So we did indicate that annually, the chief and the deputy provide through, via TAMI, a budget that we look at, and there the honorarium, the total amount is increased by CPI, or budget notes certainly indicate that. And then that's divided by the total number of calls to get the amount per call. So depending on where the calls land, it could be one year and you could make more, get more per call. If the call volume's higher, they get less per call. So it's, it's, the intent, I believe, is that it would be adjusted by CPI, but it really depends on the volume of calls they get. And then the honorariums for the three positions of chief, deputy chief and band director, those are honorariums that haven't been adjusted, but, and so the figures were shown to adjust that, which is really a small impact and could be accommodated. There was a request about, well, what do other, other fire departments provide in terms of an honorarium? That will probably take a little bit of time to get. I did send the feelers out, but it was today. So I think that we probably would want to look at more than the numbers. So we might have a higher call volume, for example, right? So it might not be as easy to compare with, say, Mahone Bay or Lunenburg. So we might want to do a little bit of a deeper dive. So if there's a desire to look at the honorarium and is it market for the positions, then I would suggest that perhaps council might want to consider including an amount in the contingency that would allow for an adjustment this fiscal year after we've had some time to do a proper kind of review and bring back the results to council. And I believe that was it in terms of questions. Yeah.
All right. So we've got management team here. The goal tonight is to reach some kind of, some kind of consensus on where we want to, we're not making any decisions tonight. That'll come obviously at the final budget meeting, but we'd like to leave staff with some, some consensus on the tax rate. And also, if there are obviously any more questions, like I said, staff are here, but also the, when we look at the list of options to address budget deficit, whether it's capital or operating, anything that, that members of council felt needed to be added or removed on that. You know, just a reminder to the public, just a few things. First is, and we've said this for the last number of years, our pressures are directly related to massive wastewater infrastructure upgrades that we must do in order to be compliant with federal guidelines, not to mention the fact that it is very much the right thing to do. Our pump system, the way it's designed, when we have heavy inflows of water, rainwater especially, it's designed to overflow into the river. That's completely unacceptable these days, but it's, it's a huge fix. So I know there's some people saying, well, just do it. Yes, it's many, 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 many millions of dollars. And it's not like a car, we can just buy a car and have it delivered. They have to be designed and then constructed. But it's, it's going to take us a while. And so, you know, it's challenging. We do, it may not seem like that. We do run a very lean municipal operation here. There's, these budgets aren't filled with things that we can just, like if you look at the list, there's, I'm looking at the list going, well, there's not a lot there to pick from that, we don't have a lot of wants, they're just all needs, really. But our challenges come down to this wastewater infrastructure. I do also want to say that the last time we had a tax rate increase, we did that in a way that would get us, we had hoped to next year. And then we had this unprecedented inflation hit us. And so that is why, in case some people are going, didn't you say you'd try to get us to 2024? Yep. I do think staff did a pretty good job considering the cost pressures that we've had to get us this far. But like residents, and this is where it gets a little frustrating for us, I think it's frustrating for the public, the cost increases that the public face it's frustrating for the public, the, the cost increases that the public face, we face. When your oil bill and your power bill and your insurance bill and all those things go up, ours goes up. So these costs rise with the same pressures that the public feels. And it's not to make an excuse, and it's not to really, no one's going to feel any better for that, but it's more of an explanation for that. So all that said, I am looking for some conversation around the table in terms of rates, so we can give staff some ideas on where we want this budget to land in a couple of weeks when it comes back, and some comments here. Get me there, yes?
Yes, Yourship. Yeah, and I thank you to staff for the presentation and answering our questions. I know status quo isn't an option here. We have to balance the budget. And as much as, as, as you said, you know, we have, we're growing, we have to deliver our services, and so, and rather come back next year for, for an increase as well. I'm looking at the, you know, feeling comfortable with the 10 cent increase at this time, knowing, again, as you said, what we have for, for pressures and for what we have to deliver. It, to me, makes the most sense to do the 10 cents option, given our, given the proposals here from staff.
Any other comments? Katsuko.
I would say, given the situation we're in, which is, as you've laid out, is largely beyond our control, I would reluctantly also support a 10, 10 cent tax increase with the goal of hopefully going multiple years without having to go back to residents and ask for another increase.
Comments, Councilor Tanner?
I'm not in favor of a 10 cent increase. I think there's other ways in this budget that we can trim a bit further. I think there's some things, Councilor Conklin pointed it out, that, you know, I think if we're a little more fair in the sewer rates on the second unit, I think if we bump that up almost to the first unit's level, I think we can come up with a fair amount of extra money revenue there. I think there's a few things in the budget deficit chart that we can certainly cut that, you know, some things like the winter maintenance root review of $50,000. I just don't see the, the return on that, I guess, given our winter maintenance budget overall. So, you know, things like that, I can walk through the list, but I think there's some things that we can certainly trim to, to bring the, this 10 cent proposal down.
Down to a number, did you have a number?
Probably around six to eight cents. Eight, probably, but.
Other, Councilor Thorburn?
This is a dawn question.
You get a Kim question?
A Kim question. I get more. Anyway, every year that I've been on council, we've had a large carryover. Now, we shouldn't be paying anything on our debt ratio until our capital projects are completed and we borrow the money. So, you know, what does that do? We've, we've got, like this year, how many million didn't we spend? And I know you told me numerous times that we don't pay until the project's done, or borrowed, I guess it is.
Right. So the numbers that Tammy has on the screen that kind of show us where we stand are based on a model. And so that model assumes that we start repaying the year after the project. So we do the project one year, the debt starts being repaid the next. We also are quite aware that projects like the pump stations are not single-year projects. Exo 12A and various projects take more than one year. And even in the current, you know, environment that we're in, sometimes the things that should be shorter are still taking a little bit longer. So it's, what I'm providing you is a model. It's not perfect. It's, has assumptions built in, but I can't pick every project and try to figure when we might finance it. So the model is kind of exactly as the budget looks. So yes, it could, could stretch out a little bit further, but eventually all those projects are going to be done, and we're going to get there. It just might be a year or two difference in the debt service, that type of thing, but it is a timing issue. I did want to mention also, with the sewer rate increase, any increase in the sewer rate beyond what we need gets transferred to reserves, so it doesn't subsidize other town operations. The sewer rate only covers sewer expenses. And right now, it exceeds that, so we're, we're putting money in the reserve for capital projects and other things. So I just wanted to follow up with that.
Councilor Thorburn? So I kind of agree with Andrew, if we can go over some of those options, and they moved some. But I'm still in favor of the 10 cent increase because I don't think two cents buys you much time. It buys you a year or two. Collectively, you're only talking $160,000 or something like that. Is it 80, 70,000, something like that?
Yeah.
80. So I would support the 10, but take it what we can. It's not going to affect the overall.
That's, that's where I'm landing as well. I kind of agree with, with both. I, I don't, any tax rate increase is painful, but I, I think people appreciate it more than when we did it the last time, that it was giving some assurance that we're not going to keep coming back year after year. And so I, I'd rather do the 10 cents, make sure we're prepared to weather any storm, no matter what happens, because who knows what's going to happen? I know they're talking about, oh, inflation's going to settle down and come down, but I don't think last year we thought it was going to do what it was going to do. But also, I think there are cuts, cuts to be made. Now, my, the one that I'm looking at specifically is in the capital budget. I don't think we're, I don't think this is the time to do the Pearl Street paving. I think, I know it's funded with operating reserve. I think that for that, you know, quarter, almost quarter of a million dollars, that either that could sit in the reserves for something else, or we could find another project that we could use for that. And in terms of the operating, as much as I really wanted to go through the winter maintenance root review, I didn't think at the time that the price tag would be $50,000. So I do tend to agree with, with Councilor Tanner that perhaps. Because that number's so high, I'm not sure the value is going to give us enough return while we're looking at such a high-pressure budget. If we were looking at a nice big surplus and we weren't ever going to be in a risk of a tax rate increase, then I'd say if we could try to whittle that number down a little bit and get it done, that might be, the value might be there. But I think, you know, if you save $50,000 here and $225,000 in paving, then I think it becomes a bigger number. But at the same time, I'm, I'm on the same page as some of the others with, I just, if we're going to do a tax rate increase, let's just do it once and give people some confidence that we're not going to have to do it again next year and the year after that. And if it buys us an extra year beyond the three that are projected, if it buys us a fourth year, then hallelujah. Because I, I've watched some of our municipal colleagues that, you know, they either funded some things with operational, thinking that they could weather the, the inflation storm, and now they're looking at a massive tax rate increase, or they went up a cent a year, then down a cent a year, and then up five cents a year, and then it's just all, there's no way for people to plan and predict. It's hard enough already, so. That's kind of where I'm landed. I'm intrigued to, I think Councilor Tanner said there were other things that you thought maybe could come out, so I'm, I am intrigued to, to see what other people are thinking in terms of finding some cost savings and streamlining it. But for me, unless it's, it's a really significant number, I'm still leaning on the, on the 10 cents to buy us more time. Also, I just want to confirm, none of our, we don't have any assumptions on grants other than grants that we have been confirmed to receive in this budget?
Well, potentially applied for. There could be applications.
Yeah.
There could be grants that we've applied for, but.
But the budget doesn't assume that we've built.
In capital.
Yeah, so we, we've applied for some significant funding for wastewater projects. So we've made the assumption on those that, because they have such a significant impact, that we're going to build that into our capital.
Okay, yeah.
But outside of that, no.
I want to understand, but others, others were not making, we're still not making the assumption?
Just what we have.
Okay.
The only exceptions would be ones like the parks.
I don't know why you guys always sit so far away.
I wish I had more room for documentation in that capital budget, but I know the font's small as it is. But the, there's a couple of parks that we had budgeted for some grant funds in the capital, so improvements to some of the parks. And so I believe what we suggested was, if those grants aren't successful, then we would just either cut one of the parks out and move it forward to a future year. We wouldn't spend the full budget if we, the grant funds didn't come in. So there, there are some assumptions like that, where we would shuffle the projects around and not exceed the town's anticipated spend on the projects.
So the safe thing to, to assume is that, like, so for future years in the 10-year capital plan, it's, it's primarily grants that we were fairly confident in, right? For this fiscal year, we do have the parks. The other one is the museum, where there was $500,000 in, in upgrades to the museum to address the building condition, and that's all subject to getting a grant. So the town's contribution is 100,000, and if we don't get the grant, we're going to kind of have to take a step back and come up with a plan.
Other, Councilor?
So just further to my comment on wastewater, if you're to bring the second unit up to about $450, closer to the first, that should net you about $400,000, which, to your point, goes to reserves, which in future budgets could be pulled and used to lower debt financing over the longer term, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Comments, Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, and I'm looking at these options to, to the capital budget. Please pour the radios on. We've got to put a healthy reserve there. That $85,000 could be used from reserves to purchase those radios. Do you think that's what the reserves was intended for? I think we talked about possibly doing that. We made more than we actually forecasted.
Yep.
And 50,000 from operational and 225,000 from Pearl Street, been to somewhere around 350,000 on those three projects, that we could be savings there.
Thank you. Other, Councilor Conklin?
Excuse me. Yeah, so the root optimization, the 50,000 there, who knows, maybe global warming's going to take care of that for us anyway.
The goal is for it not to.
I know. Certainly, we can look at deferring that. And I'm thinking maybe even the extra 30,000 on the grants to organizations. I'd like to keep Pearl Street in. I would also like to see us substantially increase our sewer rates. So that would mean, as Counselor Tanner suggested, you know, the additional unit on the residential side, bring that up to as close as possible, if not the same as the primary unit on residential. And, you know, I look at it, look at doing something similar for our commercial. And on the hospital, with that email that CAO Tammy Crowder sent, I, I can't find anything where you are talking about hospital rates on the sewer.
So it's the consumption of 30,000, the unit at the top. So that's, that's, the other rate was that, based on consumption.
I'll just kind of add to that. So when I review everyone's rates that they have posted on their website, much like we do, no one has specified a category for hospitals, neither do we on our website. So we state the residential and commercial rate, but we don't actually get into the details that's included in the council motion when we approve. But outside of actually contacting all the municipal units, we don't specifically know. They usually list their flat rate, their base rate, and their consumption rate, and some don't even have that, where I actually had to contact them to get their information. And so we don't know. What we also don't know is what special agreements a municipal unit could have with an entity that we couldn't speak to. Our bylaw specifies our four categories. I couldn't find any bylaws that specified anything separate for institutions or hospitals or anything like that.
It's the three-inch commercial?
Yeah, so what I did was look at, you know, ours has a three-inch commercial water meter, so I then related that to what the units that do have a consumption base and approximately what their water consumption would be for a year to calculate what their bill could be.
Okay, so there's lots of room for some upward movement there on rates. And if it means that, you know, helps to increase our, our pad, our reserves for future, offset future borrowing, then I think we should really look at doing something very substantial on the sewer rates. As far as the tax rate goes, the one cent, which is 80, 83,000. So that would be approximately, what, 50,000 on just residential and about 33,000 on commercial?
I was trying to look here, about 60,000, I think, on residential. I can look at, but it's in the 60,000 range.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see something around the six, seven cent mark, but anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Councilor Bell?
A question on the gap conceptual plan. Just kind of concerned if we do a conceptual plan and we're kind of, we know there's going to be pressures on the budget for quite some time, and we're kind of picking away at things, are we going to end up having to redo that plan again because we're working at it so slowly?
So in the 10-year capital plan, you see that this year we would do the conceptual plan, and then each year we would be building that plan. So we would look at implementation in the following year. So if we push out the gap conceptual plan another year, it just pushes everything out?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's, and it's to have that work done external, externally, because originally I believe the plan was that we would be doing that with internal resources. It's just given all of our other conflicting projects, it would have to be contracted. And Kim just confirmed that one cent is 65,000 on the residential.
Okay. That was, yeah, because of the increase in cap.
Other thoughts around the table? Councilor Tanner? I'm just curious on process and how we're moving forward tonight, I guess, how you're dealing with each item and so on. Yeah, so what, my, my plan was to start, yeah, my plan was actually to start picking, picking away at them and just go around. You've, you've raised a couple. Sewer rate is one, so that was where I was kind of, kind of going next in terms of the second unit sewer rates. Try to build consensus on some of these items and where we can find consensus that gives clearer direction. You know, right now, it looks like there's, there's a majority of council has landed on the 10 cents, but that doesn't mean that we're ending up at the 10 cents, so we can have a conversation around that. But I want to give, I want staff to have some clearer direction, just because right now they don't know how to build the final product, if they don't know what, what the rate's going to be. But it also doesn't mean that in a couple of weeks when we come back, we, we still have not made our final decision, right? So there is, there always is room until the very end. Kim's probably cringing, but there is room in the end to, to maneuver. I mean, I've been around this table long enough to see some ideas come out almost at the last meeting, where people went, oh, I didn't think of that, and it, it had some impact. So I don't want anyone to think that when we leave tonight, it's final, but we do need to give staff some indication, at least a very strong indication of where we're, where we're going. So I think, if I just want to pick away at, share some of your lists here.
Can you read my writing?
It'd be great, Dr. It'd be great. So the, the, some of the points raised on the second unit sewer rate, I mean, it's very logical. It has the potential to use the exact same amount of wastewater as the primary unit, so why are the rates different? So I guess that's where you're, you're going with that. So we've had a couple of people raise that. I don't know, just kind of want to get a sense around the room, if there is the appetite to go up to basically the, the primary unit rate is. Is that what you're suggesting? Or saying close to it?
Close to, my only issue is that you're, you're taking a 60% jump where it is right now. So it may come as a shock, somewhat of a shock to some residents. It's not a substantial amount of money, but, you know, we earn time, so to speak. So I'd be close to like $450, where you're maybe in a $75 difference between the first and second unit, and I'm still gainable.
Or, or we could just maybe keep the. Or we could just maybe keep the 22, 23 residential sewer rate for the primary?
And raise just the secondary?
And just raise the secondary, bring it up.
So keep that, okay.
For me, it's only a 6% increase on.
I think the revenue number wouldn't be, you know, proportional because there might be fewer second units, but.
But it'd be interesting to get that math.
Yeah.
Obviously, we'll have that for today, I would think, but.
Yeah, I just had a question, I guess, around the sewer rates for the, say, for the second. So if we're looking at, are we looking at like duplexes, multi-units? My only concern there would be the owner passes it on to the tenant as a rate increase. Yeah, so I just caution that, I guess, when we're looking at increasing that, you know, such a large amount that they'll try to pass the costs, expenses on to the tenant. That's the only thing I have, the concern of a large jump at one time.
Yeah, so we are increasing it, proposing to increase it 60%.
From 185, yeah, 185 to 297 for the secondary, but for the primary, it's went from 47 to 517.
So 6%.
So I was suggesting adding another $150. On the secondary, on the secondary unit, it's $150. Are there grabbing up right there?
Yeah, if we leave the top rate status quo and bring the other one up to the same level, so that's basically $300 at 2,500 units, which would be about $750,000 in additional revenue, whereas right there, we're looking at 72, $300,000. So, I mean, it gives us a big kick, 4, 450.
Well, and it, you know, if we're talking about a tax rate increase, you are at least alleviating some of the pressure on the people in the primary, who are going to face kind of that double whammy, because they own the primary, they're paying taxes on the primary and secondary units. Anyway, just thought. Other thoughts around the table? Let's kind of focus on the sewer rate right now and see if there's some direction from that. No, you know, one, Counselor Conklin, then Counselor Thorburn.
So, I mean, I guess the rates for additional units, it's my understanding those rates are planned increases, just they're going to be phased in, correct? So, I mean, considering the jump, I mean, 60% jump in the rate in one year is substantial by any means. So, and I mean, it's not going to make a difference in our budget this year since it's going in reserve. I probably would just prefer to phase it in and make the impact on the resident a little less in one year. I think that's quite an increase for one year.
Was the rate jump for that secondary next year also going to be that significant? Because to Counselor Conklin's point, if it's 60% this year, but also was going to get closer to that primary next year?
Yeah, so we haven't gotten that detail, but what we've done is we've suggested for the next few years, we need 20 and 15% increases to get that sewer rate to where it needs to be by the time we start repaying all the debt on the, you know, looking at that 10-year capital plan. What we haven't done is address specifically. I think the intention was to get over two or three years to get those additional units up to equivalent to the first unit, but doing that a bit over time. And so that's why staff, when we looked at it, said, how can we, you know, get it there over time? Because going from a rate of 185 to about 500, kind of dividing that by three years is kind of our thought process on getting that up there.
Counselor Thorburn?
Yeah, I agree, partner here, that it's just too big a jump from one year. We've been increasing it as best we could for four or five years now. Because when we first started, it wasn't even paying, the amount we collected wasn't paying the cost of service we was providing. And we knew we had to do something, and we'd been doing it. Now, if we're going to put our taxes up 10 cents, we're looking at 300 bucks. Now, if you're going to put my sewer rate up another $200 or $300, that's quite a tax jump from one year for normal working people. And we have so many, and we have to remember, low-income owners. I may be able to afford it, most of council can probably afford it, but it's a lot of people's going to have to start making choices. And I don't want to be in the position of having to make them make tough decisions when we can gradually phase this in. We're not dominating with the money drastically anyway, putting it in reserves. It's not going to affect the budget. So, you know, you have to be considerate. And we're on the road to get there. There's no pain to get there in one year. We can plan on this for four or five now. So let's go in a phased-in approach and we'll get there.
Counselor Conklin?
So for the secondary units, the S E W 2 rate, and I tried to source out comparables myself, like, what other, what do the other municipalities do?
How do they charge?
Yeah, because I think I've seen them equivalent to the primary, and I've seen it like at 75%. I don't know if I've seen it as low as what we have in comparison to the primary rate.
So in the examples that I provided you, a lot of them are consumption-based. We just don't have the ability to build based on consumption. So our flat rate has to somewhat mimic, you know, the average water consumption at this point. And so it's hard to compare to others when you have some of the units that look like they're in a full cost recovery using a consumption rate-based model, which we don't have. The long-term plan would be to reorganize our categories, because even our, we have four categories in the sewer bylaw, residential, hospital, hotel, and other. And so, you know, to some degree, you know, we have the ability to get at hospitals and hotels this year, but we can't kind of get at that other group very well with varying rates. So that review of the sewer bylaw would come through the fiscal year so that next year, this chart may even look a bit different.
Yeah. Thanks.
And if you didn't want to increase the first unit charge at all, like, keep it at the $487, you would need a 76% increase in the additional unit rate to about three, just over $327.
To bring in the same amount of revenue?
To bring in the same amount of revenue.
Okay.
Thirty dollars more, that's quite.
So 327, so you're looking at, it would still be less than 75% of?
It's 76%. Yep.
Oh, it would be 76.
Which is 67% of the base rate.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I was getting to. Okay, so two thirds, still only two-thirds of the base rate. So, I mean, I don't know. Maybe our rates for the primary there are too high, and maybe we bring everything else up. But I think because we were undercharging in the past, doesn't mean that we should take our time getting to where we should be charging, really. Thanks.
Other comments? Counselor Tanner?
Just for the public's sake, a 10%, a 10-cent tax increase for the average homeowner equals what, $250?
So the slides that Tammy provided earlier, what I did was for 22, 23, I took what our average assessed property was here in town, which was $165,411 with a cap of $158,134. So in the year we're just finishing up now, their tax bill, including their sewer, would have been $3,350. With the cap increase and no tax rate increase, and the adjustment to the first unit of sewer, of course, would have been an increase of $250. That additional 10 cents would be about an extra $170. 10 cents is easy math. So this year, with the cap, the property would be worth taxed at $170,000, 10 cents on that is $170. That's kind of the long answer.
Counselor Thorburn?
Just one more thing, but I think we have to remember that the primary unit is paying the price, and anytime we go on the additional units, what we really are doing is taxing the tenants through the property owners. Somebody's renting that. And if you put up a dollar, they pay it, but if you put up $200, they're going to pay it. So it means their rent's going up, because landlord's not going to cover that.
Yeah.
So it means those units are rental units. They have to be.
Not necessarily. If they're under lease.
They're still rental units, whether they're under lease or what.
Yeah, but their landlords still, or the tenant's still committed to X amount of dollars, and there are caps in place where landlord can only increase a certain amount of percent. So the landlord would be absorbing the majority of this increase.
Until they get the opportunity to increase or make to get their money back?
Yeah.
You can pay them now or pay them later, but you're going to pay them at some point.
Eventually, yeah. And it could be down the road when we have more housing available, and the market will be a lot softer.
It's finding that balance for me, because, you know, if you're not charging correctly, then I understand your point is that if it's a rental unit and the landlord is eventually going to pass those costs on, whether it's a little bit now or a lot later, but if it's not full cost recovery, it means that somebody's subsidizing it. So that, it's finding that balance of making sure that we're charging the adequate amount to everybody, because, again, if, if, you know, those 2,500, 27 people that don't have a primary unit, if they don't have a secondary unit, but the secondary units are using the same amount of wastewater, they're getting a subsidized rate. But it's finding that balance of in one year, you're increasing it by 60%. Is that enough for one year? Is it too little, too much? So I understand both sides. You look at the number and go, if you're using the same amount of water, you should be paying the same rate. But I also see that 60% jump is a big jump. Now, it's, if I hear the math correctly, if we held the primary unit the same, in order to make up the difference, we just need a 30, on top of the 60%, we need another $30.
$320, I think, to 7.
Three to, 27? So you're going from 297 to 327. When you look at that one, you don't see it as much as, like, you look at the 60%, it's a big number, but, so you're going up 76% of that, is that?
Yes.
From 60 to 76.
Here I was thinking, this will be, this will be, when I say, this is a long answer.
Counselor McCall?
I'm in favor of bringing it up to on par with the first unit. I don't know how to justify to somebody else that they're subsidizing the landlord's reduced bill on the second unit. So, you know, it's happened, it was kind of an oversight, it's being corrected, and now's the time to correct it.
So are you to bring it up to that 487, which is today's rates, or the 517, which is the proposed?
A little bit flexible on it. It doesn't have to be 100%, pretty close.
Okay. Just trying to get a sense of things.
Somebody's paying for it, and nobody really can afford it right now. So I'd rather seek a person that should be paying it, pay it.
Any other thoughts on that? Can we circle back to it then? Maybe let's think about that, circle back. So we had a couple of, a couple of comments made in terms of those areas where we might be able to pull some things out. A few of us mentioned the winter maintenance review. Can I, does anyone object to pulling that out of the budget for a year and seeing where things land? Or are people adamant that we keep that in? See anyone? Everyone's okay with that? Did you have a?
Yeah, just a new item.
Yeah, okay. Sure.
Want to add something?
No, I don't want to add anything, no.
No, you took $50,000 there.
Just more question to staff, I guess, how important the business retention expansion $10,000 study is, and can that go as well?
That was identified by our economic development officer as an economical way to get some data, some pre-data. So the other municipal units in the region did this study that was a survey of businesses to collect that data, so they hired a consultant to do that. So a lot of the background and base work's been done, we'd be tagging on to that for 10 grand. So it was cheaper than bringing someone in for a year to do it. So that's, that's why he had said it's an opportunity, you really want to miss that. But nothing, again, nothing says you have to do it. Pearl Street?
Yeah, Pearl Street, I think it's, I know Counselor Conklin wanted that in. I mentioned I could do that, but I.
I guess I'm confused about totals for paving.
Yeah.
What, what's the total package for proposed for 23, 24, including Pearl Street?
So we have for pavement management this year, there's $600,000 in our capital budget solely.
Yeah.
Then we have Pearl Street.
Yeah.
High and St. Phillips will be paved this year as well.
Okay.
Dufferin, we're just doing the design this year, so paving will happen in a future year. So there's going to be a lot of paving going on.
The Empire is next?
Empire, I believe the design is next year, and then, yeah, it's a couple of years out. Pearl Street, it's the portion that's gravel right now, so it's not a repaving of the entire street. So there's a segment that is from Transportation, what they own to their line, that was paved, and then it's gravel, and then it picks up onto asphalt again. So I believe it's a couple properties there, Matt, one or two properties that front along that, but the request was made because it's a little inconsistent in the driving surface.
So the pavement renewal annual program 220 is maintenance?
Yes, well, that was actually, we moved that from the operating budget into the capital budget, so we're saying if you want to reduce your, I mean, that's in the capital, if you want to reduce, you can reduce your pavement management, basically, by that amount, because there's a lot of paving going on.
Okay, all right, okay.
I guess for me, I was looking at Pearl Street under the lens of if, if we had the capacity to do paving work, we have a lot of high, high-use streets that are in pretty rough shape. Is that, like, I'm not disputing the need to pave Pearl Street, but is that money not better deployed on high, high-use streets that are?
You mean the ones that probably should pave there? Is that what you mean?
There's a whole bunch of them. Don't, see, you're going to get me all worked up. And you're going to get Counselor Thorburn worried about.
Yeah, if I may, your worship, I think, I don't know of all council members, no, we done a lot of work on Empire Street prior to my coming on council. A lot of lid's here. So you're really not just talking pavement, there's water and sewer cheese, as you asked me. There's stormwater separation, so you're talking millions, not a few hundred thousand dollars. So let's be clear, it's just not paving. There's other work that has to be done once we get there. So it's not just laying down some pavement and walking away. I guess you could do that, like you did on Dominion Street, and go back next year and tear it up and redo it, right?
Yeah, I do think, I do think people understand that that's, that's what's delaying it, is that it's multimillion dollars of work, because it's stormwater separation and infrastructure renewal. But anyway, I just, I know we only have a limited capacity to do pavement management just because of time and staffing, and we can't, you know, we could, we could put a million dollars to it, we can't do a million dollars of the work. So I guess my point was if, if there's the capacity to do that, are we maximizing every foot of paving to make sure that the highest-use streets that have the most impact are the ones that are getting the attention they need? Knowing, recognizing that Empire can't be one of them this year, because it does need to be just redone from underground up.
Yeah, we could use that sewer.
Counselor Conklin?
I missed the figure. I think Counselor Tanner had asked, on average, what does 10-cent increase cost residential?
Residential, 1 cent is $65,000.
No, like the actual homeowner in tax.
$420 with the sewer rate.
On the property tax?
Yes.
There's the rate there.
The four, on the bottom there, that 400, including the sewer?
Okay, taking the sewer, just straight up property, okay.
Yeah, so with, with no 10-cent increase, it's $200. Yeah, so with, with no ten cent increase, it's two hundred and fifty thousand more. That assumes the sewer rate jump. And with the ten cent increase, it's...
Four hundred and twenty dollars.
It's a hundred and seventy.
So that bottom right column, that four hundred and twenty dollars is with the sewer rate and the ten cent tax rate increase. The two hundred and fifty is just the sewer rate increase, no tax rate.
Okay, so it's...
One seventy.
One seventy.
That's the difference between no tax rate increase in ten cents. Because the sewer rate was something that council kinda committed to moving ahead, so there's an assumption that you wanna, you'll be wanting to increase that.
Okay, so in our additions and...
So we had Pearl Street, which I haven't heard a yes or no.
Yeah, I haven't heard an argument to, to pull it out, so it's in there right now, so...
And then Police Radios, it was identified that we could use reserves instead of...
I kinda thought we were just, I made the assumption when we had the discussion that we were gonna use reserves for that. I think that's, we had, we had talked about when we talked about appropriate use of those reserves, but... Didn't we change the policy until now that can happen?
The policy says that council may use it for capital as you make the decision to do so. So this budget would be one of the ways that you make that decision.
Absolutely.
So that's kinda what I was, yeah.
Makes sense.
Councilor Conklin?
Yeah, I think Police Reserves, Radios, I would support that. And you were talking about Pearl Street paving, and I, your rationale makes sense. It's a low-traffic street, could've been better used elsewhere perhaps, so if council sees fit, I would support taking that out. For the time being, not forever.
Not forever.
For the time being, when we're looking for areas to save.
The last was grants to organizations. So we had, in the, in the budget, there's an extra thirty thousand, that's proposed. So ten, fifteen thousand for the tiny shelter grants. So it was noted that we started that, we haven't had any uptake, but we started it kinda late too, this year. And then there is fifteen thousand added for consideration of annual operating funding for organizations such as Flourish, the Y, Moonbrook, Senior Wheels, those organizations that come annually and seek operational funding for your core service delivery. We didn't want that to compete with your other grants that you provide, so you asked us to bring forth a proposal there. So that totals thirty, that would be brand-new in your budget this year.
Thoughts on that one? Councilor Conklin?
So like for Flourish and YMCA, I know that Councilor Tanner and I and others have discussed, I mean, it's...
Recurring.
Recurring, year after year, and it's operating. However, the two years I've been on the Grants to Organizations Committee, we really haven't seen it impact the other asks. So the other organizations that are coming to us for, for funding, sure, it's a big part of the, you know, ten thousand between the two groups is a big part of our budget now, of twenty-nine, five, or whatever it is. But we still were able to meet majority of the needs of the other organizations, so... I mean, it makes sense to ta, kinda take it out of Grants to Organizations. However, if you do that, maybe we could look at just maybe even decreasing the funding.
By that, by that same amount, you mean?
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, like, the last four meetings we've had, we've been able to satisfy, I'd say probably at least eighty percent of the overall request, requests.
The conversation has been more than a decade of having the YMCA and Senior Wheels as a line item in the budget just because it's, it is every year. It's, I know it's the grant. Yeah, it becomes a little bit more complicated just because you do have to award a grant because they're not a department.
Yeah, okay.
So it, yeah, I think Jessica just noted that there is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in requests this year in grants. And clearly, we don't award a hundred percent of what they ask for. And there's twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand in funding for Grants to Organizations.
I don't recall seeing that much come in for requests. Or maybe some of those requests didn't make the committee.
In the September report, it was noted that there was about ninety-three thousand dollars' worth of value that was asked for. There was a portion, there was about ten thousand in kind, there was Flourish asking for forty thousand, right? That was a large ask. The value was high, and so you made a lot of decisions, weighing various things. And then in this one that you just considered tonight, there was thirty-six thousand five hundred in ask. And you went over budget, so there was only eighteen thousand left to disperse. And you went over budget by seven thousand to support the mission. Yeah, so...
Okay, let me rephrase that then. I'd say seventy-five percent of the organizations that come to us get funded. At least seventy-five percent, yeah. I mean, yeah, so we had a big ask, and this intake, and the previous one, there was a, a big one as well, right?
Yeah.
Councilor Conklin?
When it comes to the consideration for the annual operating funding, I just, I have a little bit of a problem putting fifteen thousand dollars in the budget when I'm not certain that I'll support it because I need to see the actual plan. Like, if a plan may come forward and I may say, well, I'm, I'm just not satisfied with this. Like, could we just sort of come up with a plan and then say, we're gonna move forward with it the next fiscal year if we support it? And then we vote fifteen thousand for this year?
So, so you're just, basically, you're saying, let's leave the status quo on how we do grants, like, don't, don't move anything around? And then we can talk about...
Come forward with the proposed changes, and then we look, we consider funding it for the following fiscal year.
As a standalone, sort of within the budget documents?
So a call to those organizations to ask them to put forth a proposal for annual operating?
For Senior Wheels and YMCA, maybe.
Or we can just go with status quo for now.
Yeah.
Look at the changes and then implement them for the following year.
Look at the policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have the policy before you put the money in the budget.
Yeah.
You can do that.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if there was a question there, so I just came back.
Not yet. Don't go far. I hate to see you walking up there. I, I'd support this kind of status quo right now. I do, I do like the idea of having a figure discussion standalone, not within the context of the budget. So that would, that would kinda pull that fifteen thousand dollars out because you wouldn't really be making any changes. But I'd like, I think the fifteen thousand dollar tiny shelter grant, I know we haven't had any uptake yet. I do think it's because it was short notice, so I, I wouldn't wanna see that removed. I did have a question as to why the, we just awarded a grant for St. Joseph's for the tiny shelters, but it's not coming from, can you remind me why it's not coming from this font?
It's for operating.
Oh, that's because of the construction or...
Yes, all parts have the cost.
That's to support the people who are in the existing tiny shelters, so it's not about adding more.
Okay, thank you, that's great. Okay, yeah, so, sorry, Councilor Conklin?
Okay, sorry, getting back to this ten percent increase, or ten cent increase.
Don't say ten percent.
Okay, so that's equivalent, on average, to a hundred and seventy dollars per property owner?
Based on the average taxable, or the property assessment of a hundred and seventy thousand.
What's, what does this work go to per commercial property owner?
So ten cents is a hun, it's a hundred for every...
Yeah, it's same.
It'd be a hundred and seventy dollars?
Yeah.
No, it depends on the assessed value of the property.
Yeah, but just, I know, it's all over the map, but on average...
Well, if, if that commercial property was assessed at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, then it would be a hundred and seventy dollars. So for every hundred thousand dollars of value, then it's a hundred dollars.
So half a million would be five hun, or five hundred.
Okay, I wanna just go back to this.
I like the concept of the Grants to...
Okay, so that number goes to fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah.
Capture, capture that. Okay, are there any other items in the, we talked about the Police Radios coming out of reserves. Is everyone comfortable with the Police Radios coming out of reserves? She's, she's good with that, okay?
Winter Maintenance.
Winter Maintenance, I think we had consensus on Winter Maintenance, that coming out. And in terms of Pearl Street, perhaps it's better, at the end of the day, I think council just wants that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of paving being done, and maybe, maybe we can figure out if it... Do we have to note that it's Pearl Street now, or can we just say there's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? That's gonna be twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the pavement. And if staff feel the best place for it is Pearl Street versus others, or...
So I think the question to Matt would be, is you have six hundred thousand, are there abouts of funding for pavement management or pavement renewal? Can you sustain eight hundred and twenty-five thousand in terms of feeling confident that you'd be able to spend it?
Well, that is for sure the question, because we did one year do a million dollars, and we didn't, we approved a million dollars and we didn't do a million dollars. So I don't...
Was there anything last year? I can't remember. I think that was six hundred plus two.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was six hundred.
Yeah, it was four hundred plus two. So is that, is that max you out, that four hundred plus two?
Certainly, the, we have the capacity to do about six hundred thousand dollars' worth of, because that's what we traditionally, I've only got four years here, so it seems like we can accomplish that. Some, most of the impacts, the direct impacts to staff would be how much work ahead of time, the paving itself. So manholes that have to be repaired, curbs that have to be repaired, that, that nature. So really, to, to, to give you a definitive answer for her without actually assessing our roads, know which ones, and shortlisting them. But I know we would have the capacity to do six hundred this year. To do more than that, I'd have to look at, to look at the effort level for those roads that are shortlisted for this year.
I think it was six hundred can in capital and two hundred in operating.
Yeah, that's why I thought it was six, because I thought there was some discussion on almost making it nine hundred in total for one year.
So then you can do eight hundred then? Do I hear nine hundred?
You know, I would feel comfortable with six, certainly...
Well, be hon, yeah, I appreciate the honesty.
Yeah, it, it, it's difficult not knowing what the roads are going to be. Because certainly, when, when the heavy, the contractor comes in and they want to mill, they get in and they get out pretty quick, and they can lay a lot of pavement, or asphalt in one day. It's the prep work that leads up to the deadline. Traditionally, we start that pavement management in August, so there's a lot of work for public works, depending on what the roads are selected. So that's where I just am a little, without having those roads reassessed, based on last year's decision, this year's, what I think will be this year's list, I'd be a little concerned doing more than six hundred at this point.
So would that compete with Pearl Street then? So if we put in...
Pearl Street would, this, I'm sorry.
So if we put in six hundred thousand for pavement management, and then we add two hundred and twenty-five thousand for Pearl Street, do you think you'd even get to Pearl Street?
I, based on what I believe what's gonna happen with Pearl Street, there'll probably end up being some ditching that'll be required. We'll need some gravel's added to it, but it's gonna be mostly contracted work for Pearl Street.
Oh, so that's why the capacity's...
Okay.
That's what I would assume at this point.
Kind of changes, and then, Councilor Conklin?
Would the answer be the same for if we put that money into curving and sidewalks? Like, you're not confident that you could get that much?
That would be a much different conversation. I don't know if we'd have the, internally, no, we wouldn't be able to do that much more. We'd have to start now, like, next week on curb especially, ahead of any pavement management. I'd love to see us do more curb work, because we get a lot of complaints with curb and sidewalk every year. Just as much as we do with roads, to be honest. But yeah, it would be a different conversation if you tried to invest it into either other local roads or the curb and sidewalk that would be attached to them.
So really Pearl is there because it can be contracted out?
For the moment, yeah.
While you're there, Matt, because we're gonna do some extra work on High Street and on St. Philip Street, is that gonna require much of our staff time to get things ready?
Not that I'm aware of. I am having a meeting with staff to talk about project leads and scope of work and impacts to all of the work divisions within engineering. I'm not having that till April fifth at this point, so I don't believe it's going to have an impact at this point. But it will have probably more impact to the office staff with inspection and whatnot, and probably fielding the complaints around the work itself, but nothing for public works I'm aware of.
PSC will be helping you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, just had a question with regards to the Wilds Brook Bridge construction. I see in the capital, so the province is saying it's moving it to twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and we could potentially reallocate the gas tax portion if there was another project. So...
That doesn't, so we, we've made that, I guess, change, so it's not gonna save, save any money and just reallocate gas tax.
Okay.
And, and so it would have to be an eligible project as well.
Like paving or...
We do allocate some gas tax to that now. I don't know how much of it we fund it that way. But to have an impact, it would have to replace something that we're funding from operating.
Yes, and so the one thing gas tax doesn't fund is our staff labor. And so if it's, you know, we use as much as we can on paving, but because we're using a lot of staff time, we can't even fund our pavement management program with all gas tax because of the internal labor component. And a lot of what's in the capital budget, that one point one million dollars that we're funding with operating money, is because there's really no other way. It's not long enough term lifespan to bother debt financing it. It probably doesn't qualify for gas tax because it's a lot of labor-intensive stuff and, and things like that, or it's a vehicle which we can't use gas tax for. We've cut that one down. Capital from operating is, is pretty well just things we have to pay for, so we can remove them. But funding them in an alternate way is not...
Is limited.
Yeah. And then next year, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we would need another funding source for the Wilds Brook Bridge if we didn't, if we chose to reallocate this year's gas tax. We can just save it for that project the following year. But it is an option.
Yeah, just taking Peter degree.
Yeah, exactly what it is, yeah. Okay, so I'm kinda getting the sense, at least with the Pearl Street, like I said, that it's, it's there because it's being contracted out, and if we take it out, it doesn't mean we can do more. But it does mean that we don't, we're not spending two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars now. We don't have to make this decision tonight. It's easier to remove things than to add things, as our Director of Finance would remind us, so...
And this is funded from reserve too, so...
Right, so I don't know if council wants, unless I kinda get the sense that people want to see it removed, which I don't think we're quite there yet, so maybe we, unless we are, I don't know.
I'm kinda on the fence.
Okay, so why does...
Is that our only dirt road in town, or are there more?
I had to go pick up little people.
Yeah.
I don't, Frank's?
Yeah, Frank's Lane, which has challenges that prevent it from actually being paved, so... That one, that one can't happen because it would flood the houses that are next to it. So I guess that means it probably is. So why don't we leave that in there now, just because it is, it is easier to remove it? Kind of it's been funded through reserves. So I think that...
So sewer rate, we did, we said we would...
We should circle back to the sewer rates.
Circle back, is that circling back tonight?
Well, I, I, okay, let's just recap in the additions. Are you looking at your watch? Mayor's bag is gonna be a long meeting. I gotta catch up from last week. You owe me a couple hours. Sorry. Yeah, we have a couple things to really kinda confirm. We've got, I think, four of us kind of confirmed that the ten cent tax rate, so I just wanna kinda go around again and see where we're landing on that. The sewer rate, we, we are not yet on the same page. So I would like to have a little bit more of a discussion on this. So why don't we, why don't we break this out a little bit and try to look at, because there's two pieces that we've looked at. One was increasing the secondary rate. One was increasing the secondary rate while keeping the primary the same. The other was, I think, bringing the secondary up to almost the primary at that new rate. So... I don't... I guess the first one I want to talk about is, are people looking when they're having this conversation at a way to keep the primary sewer rate at this year's level? Or are you looking at moving both together? I'm looking to Council Conklin and Council Tanner because you initiated this topic.
Well, I mean, I think it's been stated, but my theory is that if you move the secondary at least up to say $450 or so, you're going to generate about $400,000 in revenue, which will go into reserve, which can be used next year, the year after, to help reduce some of the increasing debt servicing ratios that scare the heck out of me, quite honestly. And that second unit uses probably the same consumption as the first regardless. So why are they so offset? And I like the... I clearly understand the phased-in approach, but we've been toying with this for years now and it's time to get real with what sewer actually costs the town of Vittaw. That's where I am with it.
Okay, so you are looking at the primary rate going to the proposed...
Yep, with that six percent increase. And then go out further.
Okay, Council Conklin, just want to get...
Certainly, yeah, okay. So the average homeowner, on average, the average homeowner would be paying approximately $170 in a tax, property tax increase of 10 cents, correct? So if we increase sewer rate two, so that's the additional units, up to par with sewer rate R, so for the primary.
Yep, to 517.
Well, to what it is for this year, 47.
Okay, 47, yeah.
I'm just trying with 170, okay. I don't know, I got to play with the numbers a bit, but I'm thinking even if we lowered our primary rate to help offset the increase in property taxes, while at the same time increasing the additional unit rate up to what we're paying on the resident, on the primary.
So maybe just to take a couple steps back. A couple of years ago, we had a report done by Larry and Jane. Jane? I can't remember.
Consultants.
Yeah. Jane doesn't sound right, but... Consultants. And they had, what the goal was is to move to a consumption-based. So that would be basically using the water meter, so water in equal to water out for the most part. And what, so that's kind of the end game here. We do have some issues with our accounting software that's, you know, creating some obstacles. It's taken us long to get there. But the whole intent was to move the rate to a more realistic number in terms of consumption. One of the things it identified is that residential had to go up. So if we lower the residential sewer rate on the primary rate down, then that's more of a movement it will have to make when we get to that consumption-based model. So that's the risk in doing that. Because it identified that, when we think about it, water in, water out. So if you have, I'd say, an office with five staff, chances are the water in, water out is less than the water in, water out on a home. But the commercial is paying more, right? So it was to kind of bring it to that what was fair. And so the risk would be, as I say, you lower the primary rate down and we've been moving it up, it means it will have to play catch-up on that eventually when we get to that consumption-based model.
That's a long way of saying, reducing the number is probably not feasible.
It's two steps backwards.
So when that... Okay, anyway, yeah, getting back to the Larry and Jane?
Well, I can't... Blaine.
Blaine, Blaine and Jane?
Jerry and Blaine, there we go.
Jerry, okay. So when they were telling us that our sewer rate was too low, were they taking into account the additional units or just straight up?
They were going to a consumption-based model, right? It eliminates it, it makes it fair. So consumption's consumption, so doesn't matter if it's primary, secondary, unit.
Yeah, okay.
So what you're suggesting is actually what they, what that would result in is that the primary and the additional would be equal at some point.
Ideally, we'd have a meter that measures in and out.
So this...
We just chart wherever you pay for water, you pay for the same.
That's what it was supposed to be.
So we have an issue with our accounting software?
There's a barrier there in terms of being able to use, yeah. And there's a couple water line issues that have to be addressed. So it's not as simple as just flicking the switch and saying, let's go to the water meter reading to send the sewer bill. Because we have some residential that got strange-sized water pipes and that would result in huge bills, so we got to work those things out.
I think when we alter that, Tammy, at the end of the day, some would go up. Also, what if it would drop, right?
Yeah.
On the consumption.
Yeah, it was kind of leveling out the difference between residential and commercial.
For a commercial and residential.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, we was hoping would have been done by now, but it hasn't been. That was like three years ago, four years ago.
Yeah, and as I say, it's the software and a few of the logistics that they didn't drill down into the detail of implementation. They came with the concept. Because as if you look at the information Kim sent out, many municipal units bill based on consumption, which is the water meter.
Which is, yeah.
Yeah, it can be done, it's just that the detail is what's causing some issues right now.
But we want to get there though, right?
We want to get there, yeah.
But at the end of the day, you're going to be built on consumption.
Yes.
Yeah.
You use more water, you're going to pay more. If some people use less, then they're going to be paying more. That was the whole theory behind it.
Yes, it did, yeah, it's about consumption, so...
It's about consumption.
So we just need, it's going to take us some time to get there. We're so much not further ahead. Okay. Other thoughts on sewer rate? I'm now kind of back to... I'm fine with what's proposed because it's a 60% increase to the secondary units, but I think that needs to move faster. Like next year is going to be another big jump for them. And then, because it isn't exactly fair right now, but I'm just, I'm struggling, like there's so many variables here. As we work towards our end goal, 60% is... I can sleep with 60.
You could think of it as everybody else other than that second unit subsidizing the sewer system. Yeah, you could think of it that way, despite that 60% increase.
Yeah, no, that's what I was saying before, where because they're not paying the full ticket. Yeah, but it's, how fast do you get there without, you know, it's finding that balance, I guess.
To that point, I would agree that to some extent, other citizens are subsidizing those units. But this is no fault of the people who are living in these units. This is the fault of the town. And so I think it's fair to the people living there that we phase it in.
The people living there or the owner, property owner?
Whoever's paying the bill, but it is ultimately the fault of the town. We haven't dealt with this earlier. And I think it's fair to them to phase it in.
Council McDonald.
It's also our fault that somebody else is subsidizing it. And we have to correct that for them too. So you can argue it both ways, going too fast for one and too slow for the other.
So it's finding, it's really finding that balance that council feels is the appropriate number around this table to move this forward. And I'm not sensing that way.
I'm on board with Andrew's proposal.
So Andrew's proposal is 517 for the primary and 450 for the secondary?
That was purely grabbing like a number out of the air, literally.
You're looking at 75%, 70%?
It basically gave us another $400,000 in reserve, I think is what it amounted to. And that was a quick math.
So 400 or 450?
No, $450 would give you roughly 400.
Okay, so you're looking at 450.
So in the commercially, additional commercial unit?
That's complex.
Oh.
Yeah, much after the bus.
Yeah, so... I'm guessing the average commercial assessed property is in the ballpark of about $475,000 maybe?
Let's go.
Anyway, I'm using 2023 assessed values, which is not correct. And there were 369 commercial units that were assessed in 2023. So... 10 cent increase.
Say what, 463?
475,000 is 475.
It is 475?
If the average is, you're using 475,000, it's 470.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so... I don't know, I just don't understand the discrepancy between the second, you know, SEW3 and SEWC. Why don't we just bring that up? Because, I mean, there must be a happy medium where maybe the SE... The primary sewer rate is high, too high, for example. Maybe we could look at lowering that, but we bring up the other ones to offset the drop in the revenue, sewer rate revenue there. And the same on the residential side.
So on the residential side, like, we know that the revenue's not too high on the residential side. So dropping the residential number is not, right? So we're still undercharging even with these numbers.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just finding the number in the gap with the two additional. Right?
Yeah.
It's okay to have more time. I don't want, we're not going to force a decision.
And you look at our hospital rate, which is basically less than 10 houses. Right? Oh, no, there's the additional.
Yeah.
70. So we're looking at, okay, so 20 houses. That's what we charge the hospital, the same what we charge 20 primary residences.
Yeah, I'm fine with the proposed sewer rates, knowing that, you know, that the additional sewer rates are being undercharged, but at the same time, we have to be mindful of the increase, so, and we'll get there. So I'm fine with what's proposed on the screen.
So we're still, I think we're still quite split on this one, so let's... We've got two more people to ask. We know what those guys are. Yeah, no, I thought, I thought you guys had shared your thoughts. Council call up?
I just find it interesting that the two sides are literally split on this. It's going to be up to the mayor, maybe.
I'm fine actually with what we're proposing for this year and take our time and look at all the ends and oats and come back with a plan to increase it next year. I think we're at the last hour, the last day, and I don't think we can give it justice to just deal with the oats. Take it some time to reflect on the fact it's going to have on people. So I'm happy to leave it with a 60% increase for this year and put a plan in place to address that issue next year with committee of council and staff and bring something back to us.
Okay, thank you, Council call up? You're on that, as it's presented, okay. We are kind of, kind of 4-3 with this split on that. And then I think we're kind of, that's your Council McDonald, I don't know if you had talked about where you are at the tax, for the tax rate, if you're...
I'd like to see it under 10. I know that, you know, the difference between 8 cents and 10 cents is in a lot of dollars in someone's pocket, but I think right now every dollar that stays in their pocket for the next year is meaningful to people.
Like we're, again, we're...
We don't have a number.
We're kind of split 4-3 on that. So I guess what I propose is we're not, we haven't landed on a number, but we're closer to a number. So like I said, it's easier to to take something out and it's probably easier to increase revenue than it is to decrease revenue. I don't know. So to me, it looks like we're at the 10 cent plus the, we're at that last column. But we're not firmly on that last column. And there needs to be some more discussion. That's the sense I'm getting around the table. So we do have another budget meeting, I mean, we have another meeting next week, right? We have a discussion session on Monday night, so we can revisit this one at that time.
We'll have to advertise it that way, yeah.
Yeah, so we will add, because we were going to go, our next budget meeting was going to be April 11th for
For final.
For final, but I think we'll add as part of our discussion session on Monday by budget. Specifically to talk about, I'd like to just focus on sewer and it's probably most of sewer, but sewer index right here. I've worked with council, I think we've whittled the rest down, so it's, we're quite focused, which is good. Did you have anything to add?
Well, just one thing, we've addressed pretty much all the items in the any, big-ticket items that were on the table, except asset management. So I just wanted to put that on the table to gauge council's opinion on that, whether or not that is in fact in or possibly not.
So that included everything right down to here. So it's about 127,000, I believe, is what I had indicated. So that's salary, software, you know, setting up the office. Stuff that would be included. And then on an ongoing basis, it would be salary. So 85 in future years. One of the things I indicated to council was that we've done some work on asset management and we're just finalizing the policy and the strategy, which will come to council. This would have been the next step, which would have been the development of the plan and implementation. It would, you'll have to do it at some point. If you skip a year, the risk is you lose a little momentum. We could try to keep that going, which is why it's offered as something that you might want to consider because we could get by for the next year without doing it.
Wait, sorry, Council.
At some point in time, though, isn't that tied to us funding?
The whatever, the gas tax agreement, which is, got a new name now, says that municipalities have to undertake asset management and they worked that agreement out with each province. So then the province has that agreement with municipalities. And the province of Nova Scotia has taken this, the position that municipalities must be working towards asset management and the development of it, but there's no hard and fast date that you have to have it done by. Some provinces have. And they've said, you know, some provinces have mandated and it's already, the date's been, you know, deadline's gone by, right? Here, it's more working towards that and they're a little bit, it's a little bit of a slower pace. But it is a requirement, just it could be five years, it could be, there's no, I don't know the deadline to have that done. I know the gas tax funding agreement, the Canada Community Building Fund does have an expiry, I believe it's in 2024, 2025. So we'll see what they may require after that, but...
But it has a direct impact on our capital budget.
It sure does, yeah, yeah.
It will save us money, it's money well invested. I set on that boards back in 15 and 16.
Yeah.
I think we should keep that one in there. We've got to keep going, we've got to do it. And every time you take it out, it's going to cost you more than the next time you try and bring it back.
You'll lose your momentum, so we haven't gotten very far in it yet. So that's not to say that staff aren't, you know, collecting data on our assets and that type of stuff. They're doing some of that now. It's more the lifecycle cost planning and stuff like that that and the council's understanding of... understanding of, of the condition of our infrastructure and the replacement timelines associated with that and the maintenance cost, so you can make decisions, like, so we have our wastewater is a good example of something that, we have a good handle on that for the collection piece of it, right, like, for the sanitary in the storm and the lift station sizes, but there's other parts of it we don't, right? So it's kind of doing those condition assessments on everything, so you know all of your assets, but it's a long game, it's not a, it's not a two-year thing, that this would be a permanent position.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Councillor Tanner.
So just on the 10-year operating model chart, I don't know if Kim's been keeping count, but it looks like we're about $100,000 off the 10 cent rate amount. So will that be redone for next, for Monday? Can you, we see that?
Yeah.
Tweaked again? Okay.
Yeah, the updates that we went through tonight will be reflected.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Going back to councillor Caldwell's question, I don't, I don't know if folks were looking at removing the asset management. I know, I, the goal is that this more than pays for itself, so I don't know how quickly it does, but it should save us money, so...
In the long term, yeah.
I, I ultimately support it, but I thought it would be irresponsible not to at least discuss it as a large-ticket item that's on the table.
Yeah, like, would be, look at that in the same basket as the root optimization, because it could potentially save us considerable amount of expenses long-term. I mean, if we're willing to chop that for this year, I don't know.
Yeah, I get, for me, I see what you're saying, for me, there's, there's a lot more confidence that the asset management position saves us money than the root optimization does. I still want to see it done, just even if it reinforces what we're doing is perfect, but it wasn't a hill I was going to die on either way, but it just, for something, if we, to save some money, I think it was made sense to pull that out. But, and to Wayne's, councillor Thorburn's point, sorry, that we have to do the asset management at some point anyway, right, we're legislated to...
We're required to, just, there's no deadline, right, so I can't tell you that you have to have it done in two or three years' time, but it's, it's best practice, right, and it makes, it's kind of like the question that was asked last week about, you know, we've got capital to build new parks, but we're never thinking about the operational side of that and how much it's going to cost to maintain that. This is what asset management does, it brings that lens to how we make our investments.
I can hear councillor McGinnis as soon as you said that. Every time someone said, I'd like to donate land for a park, he said, but you're donating the money to operate it and, you know, ensure it and to maintain it, because if you aren't, then it's not free. Councillor McDonald.
I know we don't know when it will be required, but as soon as it is required and attached to funding, the price tag on getting that work done is going to go through the roof too, so being ahead of the game might pay off here as well.
That's where I'm at. We should stay on it.
Okay, so we will, we will add budget to our discussion session, we'll try to be more focused on a couple of areas, but it does not mean that we can't continue to have, like, if, if council through its questions and seeking answers over the next week comes up with something that we can do to save some money or increase the delivery service in a more effective way, then please, like, nothing's off the table still, so we're just heading, you have some consensus on, or some direction of where we're trying to go. Okay, that concludes this council meeting, thank you, everyone. Don't forget, talk Bridgewater tomorrow, 12th floor at the mall, and then 6:00 to 8:00 at the library at the LCLC, and I think between all of us, we are out, so that's, that's great. Looking forward to some respectful conversations with citizens.
Where, where in the mall?
Down by Tim Hortons.
That's good.
Yeah.
Food court?
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Councillor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager, we are adjourned.